I'd like to call to order the regular school board meeting for December, December 9th. Roll call, all members are present. And at this moment, would you have a moment of silence with us? Please rise for our pledge to allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we will have a motion to accept the agenda as it is. If someone would be so kind as to make such a motion.
I move we accept the agenda?
Second.
Oops, sorry.
All right.
I move we accept the agenda?
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote, all those in favor of accepting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda accepted, seven to zero. All right, we're up to presentations and recognitions. We have listed here the CCHS choir performance.
So this group I brought here tonight is the CCHS select choir. They're actually an after-school group. We typically, and during this holiday season, we've all been so busy that we're actually just singing some of the music we've been learning in class without a choir, just in a smaller setting. So this group is wonderful for any type of performances where there's not space for me to have 28 kids up front singing and so we don't really call that. So I'm gonna kick off with just a little bit of holiday music.
O Hanukkah, Hanukkah, comes by from menorah. Let's have a party, we'll all get the hora.
Gather round the table, we'll give you a treat.
Dreidels to play with and harakas to eat.
And while we are playing, the candles are burning low. One for each night, they will shed a sweet light to remind us of days long ago. One for each night, they will shed a sweet light to remind us of days long ago.
I have a little dreidel, I made it out of clay. And when it's dry and ready, the dreidel I will play.
Oh dreidel, 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 I made it out of clay. Oh dreidel, dreidel, dreidel.
The dreidel I will play.
Habbaneul shalom, aleichem. Habbaneul shalom, aleichem. Habbaneul shalom, aleichem. Habbaneul shalom, 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 aleichem. We bring God's peace, now God's peace, we bring on to you.
So our next song is Away. It's just a arrangement of Away and Manger. They're gonna say the word away a lot. See if you can listen and figure out where the melody is at. It gets passed around a lot, there are a lot of things that happen, we'll see. One, two.
Away, away, away. Away, away, away.
Away in a major young crib for a bear.
Away, away.
Jesus laid down his sweet head.
His sweet head.
The stars looked down.
Looked down where he lay.
Lord Jesus asleep.
Sleep.
Away, away.
Away, away, away. The sky has stayed by my cradle till morning, morning is nigh.
Away, away, away.
Be near me, Lord Jesus, thou hast need to stay. Thou art by me forever and love me, I pray thee. I saw the dear children in thy tender care.
Tender care.
I fear to soar heaven to live with thee.
Thank you, officer.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the CCHS choir and Mr. Burns from CCHS, leading us in those songs. Thank you so much. We have other recognitions coming. Student recognition, AP Scholar Award recognition. Dr. Soderholm.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Bradz. I'm here tonight to recognize Culpeper County High School students who have earned National AP Scholar Awards for their performance on the 2024 Advanced Placement Exams. These students have excelled in challenging coursework and achieved scores that distinguish them among the top students nationwide. There are three award levels, AP Scholar, AP Scholar with Honor, and AP Scholar with Distinction. For the students who are here with us tonight, the first award, Distinction or Designation, is AP Scholar. This award is granted to students who have received scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. And the first student is Charles Holland. Our other AP Scholar is Ryan Mahoney. Now, I talked about there being three different levels. The next level is AP Scholar with Honor, and that's granted to students who receive an average of score of at least 3.25 on all their AP exams taken, and score of three or higher on four or more exams. And then the final one, the highest level, is AP Scholar with Distinction. This award is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all their AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more AP exams. And we're very proud of our AP Scholar with Distinction, Elizabeth Ellie Weinco. Now Ellie is quite talented. I'm gonna call her back up here in just a second. In addition, by the way, in addition to this, we had three students who graduated this past year who also had earned AP Scholar Awards this past year, and they're off at college. In addition, we've been notified that we have two students who have received the designation of committed students in the National Merit Scholarship Program and received letters of commendation from the College Board. This means that their scores were in the top 2% to 3% nationwide on the PSAT test. And so the first one of those is Ellie Weinco. And then our other committed students for the National Merit Scholarship Program receiving a letter of commendation is Matthew Esray.
At this time, we will have the recognition of Culpeper County High School VDOEA Continuous Improvement Exemplar Award. Mrs. Hoover is gonna take care of that for us.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Bradz. I am here tonight to talk about Culpeper County High School, who have received a Virginia Department of Education Exemplar Performance Award. And these awards give the Board of Education an opportunity to recognize schools for excellence in either high achievement, continuous improvement, or innovative practices. Culpeper County High School has earned this recognition from their increase in their Graduation Completion Index, or GCI, for each of the past three years, with a total increase across the three years of 4% or more. And they demonstrate a decrease in the dropout rate for each of the past three years, with a total reduction across three years of 15% or more of the first year's dropout rate, if you caught all those calculations. But we are really excited tonight to ask Dr. Soderholm to come forward and accept this award.
At this time, we will have our Principal-Student Superintendent-Advisory Council report from Campbell Lee, Eastern View High School.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board, and Dr. Bradz. My name is Campbell Lee, and I am a senior at Eastern View High School and a member of the Superintendent-Student Advisory Group. For those of you who don't know, I, along with 15 other members, eight from each high school, meet with our principals and Dr. Bradz once a month to discuss updates, improvements, and new ideas for our schools. The headlining discussion points from the meetings thus far have been adding new classes to their curriculum and what those might be, discounted school meals, and the newly adopted no-cellphone policy and yonder pouches. When we discuss adding classes to the current curriculum, we make sure the focus meets the needs and interests of the student body. For example, the inclusion of study hall has been a great success. It offers students a block during the school day to complete work for their classes when time after school may be limited due to sports or jobs. We've also talked about the idea of adding a real estate class. This would be an awesome opportunity for interested students and put them one step closer to being workforce-ready upon graduation. In addition, we have discussed offering new extracurricular activities, such as a student-led choral club and men's volleyball team. Our next major topic has been the free breakfast and free lunch for all students. From data shown to us in the last SAG meeting, there's been a significant increase in the amount of students eating at school, and we know this is due to there not being a cost associated. Being able to eat school meals with no worry or judgment should be provided for all students, and the SAG Committee hopes the free meal program will continue. Lastly, the yonder pouches. As you can imagine, as the students of SAG, we have discussed this from every angle. We are leaders at our schools and ultimately support our administration and will work to make this change of no cellphones as positive as possible for all. I would like to share my own personal experience. At EV, we implemented this last Thursday, December 5th. The last three days of school have been the most interactive I've had throughout all of high school. It's really nice to actually talk to people, and I can already see a change for the better. Thank you so much for your time, and now I'm open for questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments?
Yes, Ms. Deslitz.
Thank you for coming and presenting to us tonight, and it warms my heart to hear that just after a couple days already, you know, that there's interaction going on. So thank you for giving us that feedback. It's great to hear. Thank you.
I too want to say thank you for the positive feedback. I also had a question, the real estate class, was that a student's idea?
Yes.
It's a great idea.
Anybody else?
I'll just reiterate that we're so glad you came to make this presentation, and I was happy to hear about that real estate class, because I think that would be something we could get the kids certified on, and they could go into that right after high school. That'd be wonderful. And the inclusion of study hall has been going well, and the yonder pouches, interaction with other students, wonderful. I actually was talking to someone and was thinking, maybe we need to get games back into the classroom. And National Geographics and things, you know, where kids are still learning, but they're having fun, too. Yeah, thank you.
And I just will say thank you again, and it's always valuable to hear student input, particularly from high school students. And so I know your administrators value that with you and your other team members, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
And again, thank you, and you did an outstanding job presenting tonight.
Thank you.
I think everybody else has already said whatever I could say, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Now we will have the Farmington Elementary School report from Mr. Glick.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Bradz. Do I have a clicker? All right. Here, I thought the whole audience was here to see me, but obviously not. They got out while the getting was good. All right. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about family engagement at Farmington. We know one of the best things we can do is bring our families into our schools, welcome them, get them to support us. And one of the best ways we can do that is by having activities that get them into the schools. So what I want to do is go over a couple of things we're doing the last year or two, and where we're looking to go in the future. And forgive my voice, I've had a cold. My AP's out with the flu, and my art teacher who was supposed to be here had to pick her kid up from basketball practice, so we're going solo. All right. Now, one thing, we do several standard events that you'd find at every elementary school in Culpeper County. We have the Meet the Teacher event. We have the kindergarten orientation. Our PTL on those days actually provides, thank you, ma'am, t-shirts for each incoming kindergarten gardener. This year, it was, unfortunately, against my better judgment, a Taylor Swift theme with, "In my kindergarten era," the kids seemed to like it, the parents liked it. Hmm, me, I'm not a Taylor Swiftie. We do do the Fantastic Fox yard signs, which every month, each teacher chooses a fantastic fox. And one of the ways we try to involve the parents is by giving them each a yard sign to post in their yard. Because we are the smallest school and we have the largest walking district, we can give a lot of those signs out at the end of the day with all the parents around as they're picking up the kids. So each kid gets celebrated even more from the crowd. And our last standard event is the Back to School Night, which we pair with a Popsicles on the Playground. This was something started by Renee Wooten, continued, and it's actually one of the best evenings of the year, because the parents go out back after meeting the teacher, seeing what the school's gonna look like on that back-to-school night, and then they all are watching their kids playing together on the playground. And each year, it's getting darker and darker and darker, and I'm going, all right, I have to lock up the school now, but you can walk around the edge if you need to. And everyone seems to have a very good time, and they meet and they make connections with each other. All right. Our STEAM night is our most popular night. As you can see, we do sometimes get guests to come from outside the school. During that time, our students, our parents, get to do robotics, programming. They're building, they're doing catapults. One of the most popular items is, sorry, the art station where they're doing spin art, and they each get a ceramic tile with their art to go home with them at the end of the evening. Each year, we're improving and putting more into it. I want to special thanks to Ms. Hoover over there, who provides us with funds and looks for ways for us to fund even more activities. This year, we hope to grow it by pairing it with our Crazy H Club, which is a club run by my first-grade teachers for first and second graders interested in STEM, and it goes for 10 weeks, and they come in every day doing different STEM activities, and hopefully they'll be able to run a station as well, so they can show off what they've learned. Last fall, if you've been into our school lately, you've noticed we've livened up the entryway with a fox mural. That was done by Leighton Scarborough, who also was brought in for our literacy night. And he spoke to the students about writing his own book, illustrating his own book, and every student had the opportunity to get their own illustration. This year, in the fall, we expanded it, paired it with our book fair evening, and went from having a library full of parents and kids to a gym full of parents and kids, all learning about the illustration. And the only person who failed on the drawing was me. But then again, I failed art in high school, so what can you say? But it's a growing event, and we look forward to doing it again next year. Last spring, I went to the art show for the county, and it was amazing, the amount of art that was there, the quality that was shown. We also saw our students there, but the truth of the matter was, so many more of our students deserved to show their art. So our art teacher quickly put together an art show. We got people in there, including Ms. Pearson who stopped by, and it was a very successful event. This year, she had a different idea. She decided to do a glow art show, where every student created a piece of work, artwork, that would glow under black light. We grew the number of families participating by 200, had over 500 people come through the gym to see the glow art show. It was great to see, it was a fun event, people going around, seeing things. I did not buy nearly enough black lights, so when we do it again in the future, there'll be more black lights, there'll be steam machines, we'll make it quite the event to come to. And we've already started planning for what we're going to do next year. What people don't, I think, really realize, is when I started at Farmington as an AP, we were, our single largest demographic was white, non-Hispanic, at 52%. As of this morning, our single largest demographic is Hispanic at 46%. We have kids from four continents, 19 countries, speaking seven different languages. So we're starting to plan our multicultural night for next year, where we hope to bring the families in and have them celebrate their individual cultures, have them celebrate the foods that they eat at home, and really get a way to express what it's like for them. So you all will be invited when we get a date and time. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very impressive. Anyone have comments? Start that way, this time.
Thank you, Mr. Glick, for that presentation. I look forward to this multicultural night, and I'm jealous of those kids who get those fantastic fox signs. I see them all over the place, and I wish every kid could have a sign like that. Your efforts are so commendable. I just love what you're doing, so positive and so wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Every time I come to Farmington, you all treat me like family, and you really are a big family there, and the fantastic fox signs are also in Spanish. So that is kind of nice, you can read either side, and that was a very popular thing that you all came up with years ago. And I appreciate you being willing to get into the photograph for the art show, since I know you are a big artist. But the efforts of all of your students are reflected with the efforts of their teachers. And so it's a very good environment, and I know that's due to the leadership of you and Rose and your whole staff working to benefit students, so thank you.
Yeah, I mean, most of these nights would not, and all of these nights would not occur without the efforts of my staff.
Absolutely.
Who do a fantastic job.
Mr. Glick, the STEM night was really very, very well done, and there were many stations there that night, and every single one of them were interesting. I really thank you for all of that.
Good. We hope to add a couple more this year.
We all know that our parents are critical to the success of our students and our teachers, and having these opportunities to bring them in, to make them more familiar with the school and understand what we are doing in the classroom is critical to the success of not just the school system, but each and individual child. Thank you so very much for having these opportunities for these students.
Ditto to that. Honestly, what I was gonna say is, it is a goal to get the parents in, and when you say you had over 400 coming through, and you're still looking for ways to bring in more, it's commendable, and it was a great presentation. Thank you.
I get to go almost last. I was very impressed by the creative ideas and the mix of different things, and especially the increase that you've brought of more families coming in, because that's really a challenge, trying to, you know, have families get time and get them involved in school. We talked about it as a board a lot, and it was very great to see your kind of out-of-the-box creative stuff that your staff is doing, and just thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job, Jack.
Thank you.
Great job, great school. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the work. Thank you for the last.
At this time, I see no one on the list to speak. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? All right, then we will go on to approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is the minutes from November 11th, and the payroll and payment of bills?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second. Alrighty, is there any discussion? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes and to approve payroll and payment of bills, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the consent agenda is passed, and we are up to action items. Action item number one is the approval of the CCPS Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan for '26 through '30, and that's 2026 to 2030. Is there a motion to accept?
I move that we approve the capital improvement plan.
Second. All right, is there any discussion on this? All right, having heard none, I would like to have us vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. First reading of the school calendars for '25, '26, and '26, '27. Is there approval for the first reading?
I approve the first reading. Oh, I'm sorry, I make a motion to...
Yes. All right, second. Any discussion on the calendars?
Yes, go ahead. I, I have had several staff members notify me that they liked the, maybe it's just the way the calendar fell, but they were appreciative of the length of time for the winter break. So I did receive positive feedback about that from several people. All right, yes, sir.
Madam Chair, Members of Board, just a reminder, this is just your first read. Your final approval will be at your January board meeting at reorganization. We have shared this calendar with staff, with teacher roundtable, parent roundtable, all of which have been, received favorably the, the structure to include, but not limited to, the notion that it's a two-year calendar so that folks can plan ahead, and that our community norms are in place in terms of where the breaks are, where the breaks are protected throughout the year. So I just want to share that with you. Again, this is not final approval, but it has been well-received thus far.
Yes, sir.
We're happy, staff is here, happy to answer any questions you may have, other than that. Thanks.
Is there any, well, we have a motion to accept the first reading. Do we have, did we have a second for that? And so now, any discussion, additional discussion, anybody? Nobody?
I appreciated the way it was laid out. I appreciated the way it was laid out, so we can compare.
Yes.
And I think it looks really good.
Yes, the comparison chart is also in the agenda on board docs, if anyone wishes to look at that. I've had compliments from staff on, they like the calendar, they like where the breaks are, and a lot of times, it's unusual to have compliments from staff.
Regarding the calendar.
Regarding the calendar, sorry. Everybody has something specific they wanted that just didn't get in there. So very happy about that. So we will vote on our first reading. All those approving the first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, now we're up to superintendent's update. Dr. Brands.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I will be super, super brief. Just a reminder, a week ago today, we put out the budget survey for FY '26, and the closing date will be this Friday, Friday the 13th. So those out there in viewership land, please, if you have not done so, give us your feedback on our budget survey that is located on our website. And we've put out a few notifications, and we will do so throughout the week this week as some reminders that it is available. So we've had some excellent participation so far, but the greater responses, the greater the feedback, that's what we're looking for. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
That notification, thanks.
All right, any questions for Dr. Brands on any of this? Well, good. All right, so we were up to Mr. Allman.
No, 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 no.
What?
Sorry.
Ms. Hoover's doing.
I must have had something else, and... All right, Ms. Hoover. Yeah, my printing's old. It's in other pages, I only print it once.
If I had known that Campbell was going to do such a great job, you probably don't even need to hear from me, but I'm just here with a, a quick yonder launch update. As you're aware, after much preparation, we launched the Yonder program in our secondary schools last week. The launch went extremely well due to the extensive planning of our administrators and their school teams. An unbelievable amount of work went into rolling this thing out, as well as they did. On each school's launch day, they gave each student a numbered pouch in their homeroom, assigned to that student. The kids put their devices inside, locked the pouch, and carried on with their day. At the end of the day, the administrators rolled out unlocking bases, or if the bases were mounted on the wall, came around, screwed those magnets onto the bases for dismissal. And the first day, I went into the first school, and I held my breath and thought, "Here we go," and it was just, it was so smooth, I couldn't even believe it. They got the kids through onto the buses in four minutes. So I was able to be there for three of the four first-day dismissals, and I really was amazed at how well it went. While some were expecting big backups, we've had a lot of people that said, "Well, I've been to a concert, and nobody could get out," and we did not have that at almost every exit. That was not the case. One high school, I already mentioned, reported four minutes to get the bus riders out on their day one. One middle school noted that it only took two extra minutes to get the kids to the car rider line on day one. So that was really impressive. Our cafeterias saw a huge transformation, kids talking to each other, playing games. I think Ms. Kilby even got to play Uno one day last week with, with some kids. The kids are eating more because they're actually focused on what's in front of them, the food and the people. And then I got to experience that in one of the cafeterias today as well. Now, I will not stand before you and say that it's been absolutely perfect, and there have been no issues whatsoever, because of course, with any new thing, there are things that come up that we didn't expect, but the schools have been great in making adjustments. Each day, the school teams analyze how the day went, and they make changes so they can improve it for the next day. For example, they might have had to adjust the number of bases, or bring, they thought they'd have more kids at this door, but it ended up being that door. So they've been moving those things around, and they've been helping each other. If things come up in each building, they're sharing that with each other, and that has been really great. And they're not only sharing things that are happening, but they're sharing their equipment. If, hey, do you have an extra base? I could really use another one here. And everyone has just been wonderful in supporting each other to make this successful. Last week, we had parent roundtable, we also had teacher roundtable, and all of the feedback that we had from those groups was positive. And I just also grabbed a few of the comments from those meetings that stuck with me, and then other things that I've just seen out there, and I'll just share those with you. One said, "As a mom and as an educator, I say amen," all caps. One person said, "Day one was weird because they didn't know how to talk to each other." But then they started bringing games, and, and they figured it out. "It's been so nice listening to the kids happy about conversations during lunch." This was from a family. "We were apprehensive at first, but now we're 100% on board." Someone else said, "This is a step in the right direction." A teacher noted that students were talking and engaged. A parent said, "My kids came home today and said they could see more engagement with classmates and more instruction time." One student reported that he could focus better in class because he wasn't thinking about wanting to check his phone all the time. And then one of us, a school employee in one of the high schools says, "It was an amazingly positive experience on the first couple of days. Kids were talking to each other again, and they had happy teachers who felt like they got their students back." And this is just after a few days, so we're pretty excited about that. So that's just a sample of what we're hearing, and we look forward to hearing more as the schools and students get used to the program. We want to remind folks out there, parents, if they have questions, concerns that are still out there, they can contact their school's principal. And overall, we're really pleased to report that we can already see, and we heard it, like I said, from one of our students, that this program is already making a positive impact in our schools, and we appreciate your support in revising the policy and then helping us to make this happen. So thank you.
Comments or questions? Anyone?
I actually had a teacher tell me that on day one, they expected complaints and whining or whatever, and the kids didn't at all. And, I mean, they were shocked. So, yeah, it's really good, I'm glad. Thank you for the feedback.
I've heard nothing but positive things from the teachers and the staff on the improvement of attention and engagement. Thank you.
Many of those comments that you repeated, I had constituents talk to me about. One thing I knew they did at one of the schools were some conversation starters, some cards for students that maybe were assigned to a lunch table and maybe didn't know how to talk to their, their peers, and Mrs. Kilby's school did that. That was, that was very good. And, and there's always an implementation dip, the full-en implementation dip, when there's a new change. And, and I feel good that our administrators and our staff are, are being responsive to students and parents, and I just want to commend you all for all of that hard work, because I know it's, it's a big, big job. So thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I, I have a comment. I think it's fabulous. I've heard nothing but good things, and for parents who have had bumps in the road, patience, and giving it a little time to work out bumps that maybe we didn't think about, or maybe we didn't, you know, know that was going to be an issue. And, and sometimes our parents are very, "Right now, right now, right now." And when you start something new, right now takes a little bit of time to try to make sure you're getting it right, and that's really what that week was about, and I believe we've got those things ironed out, and I believe it is definitely in the right direction. My personal opinion would like to see it in places business, so I could actually get some help over having to wait for them to get off the phone to help me at a store, but that's just for stores to think about. So thank you very much, and the school system's got it right.
Now, Ms. Allman?
Dean.
Dean, Mr. Dean. So Allman's not doing anything.
Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Brands, tonight's finance update is through the month of November, so we're starting to stack up the months in the school year. We're going to start out with our revenue, our funding source. Of course, our biggest funding is through the state, and it reflects off of our membership. So again, this month, we saw more improvement. It actually improved 10 members in the average daily membership count, so it really cut into the revenue shortfall, another $78,000, which is positive. And also, bullet pointed at the bottom, we are up to 8,304 students as of the end of November. So all in all, positive trends. We are seeing it level off, like I mentioned last month, and again, really, the next big change will come in January when we have early graduation. So that's our revenue. And then just a recap of how revenue is from a budgetary point of view, 65% of our revenue is from the state, so that's $78 million of the 119 million. And of course, the county government funds the other major piece, which is another 29% of 35 million. So moving over to the expenditure side, our year-to-date expenditures for the school operating fund is 42 million, and that's right at 36%. And then also, for our food service fund, is 37%, or 1.7 million. So very consistent in both funds. Specifically, talking about the month-by-month in the school operating fund, you can see, I always say, it's just so consistent, but again, in November, we spent another 8%, so you can see how it's stacking up with another 65% to be spent for the remainder of the year. So we have another seven months to spend, spend money. The two bookends will look the oddest, July and June, so hopefully, we stay pretty consistent And this really stacks it up to prior year. You can see, we're actually trending a little below last year, and it's really specifically in this month, 35.5% year-to-date versus 36.3, but again, very consistent with the prior year. With our food service, again, I, I keep preaching consistency, but you can see how we spend, you know, 11 to, well, it's really 9% to 11% is what we normally spend month to month to month. The two bookends are a little odd as well, along with August, but school really starts a little bit later. It doesn't start in July, and the bills are not due until September, so that's where you see the, the swing there. But once again, very consistent. I did add this slide this month to really show the consistency with prior year. We are a little ahead of last year. I would attribute that to really our increase in meal cost. Basically, we're providing lunch for everyone, right? Lunch and breakfast and lunch, so that volume increase is driving us up a little bit. So we, we are seeing that effect, so, but very consistent with the prior year, 37% this year versus 35.4% last year. So any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Comments? Thank you, sir. Dr. Brands will now give us the operations report.
Madam Chairman, Members of Board, I'm doing the operations report for Dr. O'Brien. He's going to be here this evening. His mother passed, and so he's out of town right now, so our thoughts and prayers are with our colleague and his family right now. So I'm going to run through this and ask any help from the folks, but I think I have most of it, but we'll run through it quickly. Facilities, just as we like to show you some items that we've been working on, these are some repairs to bleachers at EVHS. You have some work orders for November, how many completed and how many new were received in the month of November. A lot of work completed, a lot of work requested, in terms of making school happen, making our facilities run smoothly, and for our students and our staff. These are punch list items that were finalized on our tennis court renovation specifically at CCHS, a few items that were not to our satisfaction, and they came back and took care of those items, so we're very pleased that that's done. To help with traffic flow and also pedestrians crossing, sometimes even with the buses there, it can be a little bit squirrely in terms of people wanting to go through buses, so we've, we've put in these portable barricades at Pearl Sample, and these seem to be working very well to help us achieve better traffic flow with our, our car riders, and certainly with our buses that line up right there in front of the school and, and on the, on the yellow line there. So that's, that's new. That time of year, winter, fall, going into winter, leaves are dropping, trees are older, we're doing some tree work on that. At CTEC, we're investigating charging station plans. We've had the engineer that did the program, the, the solar program there, not the installation company, but the engineering who designed it as a component of the design with RRM. Ascend Engineering came out and looked at the facility, because we, we do have enough power there, are creating enough energy there to add some charging stations, so we're looking at the possibility of putting some charging stations on this side that is in the bus loop. We can't be on the yellow stripe side because that's a no parking lane, but we can be this, be here on the inside. And again, keep in mind, this would be after hours, and nobody's coming through this bus loop, so this is a good spot, and we have the power to do so. So we're looking forward to maybe this coming to fruition. And again, this is something that we have budgeted in terms of the grant for the upcoming new four electric buses and the charging stations to go along with it. Charging stations, we have the mounts for them, for two more charging stations at the bus terminal, bus, bus garage, and then possibly for two to be out here at CTEC, and outplacing those... And outplacing those, yes, to utilize the energy, but also outplacing them so they can get out on their routes more rapidly. So, looking forward to that and looking forward to keeping you updated on how this goes. Pretty exciting. Food service, Mr. Dean has talked to you about food service and service being up. You can see, year over year, and you've got holiday time in there and where things fail, so we're almost even over last year's, well, maybe almost 1,000 up, but not as much as some of our other months that, that have happened this year. You'll see that à la carte is down, that's, that's a bit of the drag, but lunches are significantly up, so that, that's been a good thing. We've heard everything from our student advisory to students here this evening saying participation in breakfast program and lunch program has been a positive thing. And when students tell you that they don't feel pressure, they're not worried about having money to pay, and they don't feel any stigma for that, that, that's an awesome thing. Plus, let's face it, they're going to be more ready to learn if they're not hungry. So, we're excited about this, but we're also understanding that this costs us money. As the students ably told me and my advisory group, there's no such thing as a free lunch, Dr. Bradz, and you're exactly right. That's, that's what my dad said. That's exactly right. He's right. We have to pay. The reimbursement rate, we are not in the sweet spot to get 100% reimbursement. This is not the normal free and reduced lunch program, school lunch program. What, your, your father's, remember that term? No, it's not that. It's a different aspect of the federal lunch program, and that the community eligibility program is based solely upon direct certifications. We want to keep showing you what our direct search look like, what the enrollments look like. That's not necessarily participation, but you think about those who are eligible for free breakfast and free lunch, so our numbers are going to be pretty close to those enrolled numbers. So, that's why we're showing you that in that bar graph. So, enrollment versus direct certified. As I told, finance, the sweet spot for getting 100% reimbursement is about 65%. We're a ways off, and so we know that we're going to be upside down on this. We also went into this knowing that we have a surplus in our food service fund, but at some point, we'll have to make a decision, and administration will have to make recommendations and give you multiple, multiple avenues to, paths to go, rather, in terms of how do we continue to do this? Because I think you're going to consistently hear your administration say, "We want to keep doing this," but we're also going to tell you it has to be paid for in some way, shape, or form. We would prefer not to take it back to where our families are paying, but we'll have to wait and see how this goes. We'll keep you apprised of this throughout the process this year, and certainly throughout the budget process coming up for building and working on FY '26. Wow, what a popular day. Kids were coming back, we want more corn muffins, that's down there on the bottom in the picture. That was a very popular, this was, I believe, the Friday before last or something. This was a very popular day. I will say, that was a popular day, but I'm, and I'm, I'm not going to have the, the count right in my mind, Mr. Dean, but Mr. Beeman, we're so excited. The highest single-day lunch count that he had was the Thanksgiving meal that we had just before the break. That, that was the top number since he's been in this role, and he's been in that role for a minute or two. I, I won't go. Technology, a lot of work orders there, won't go through that. Continue work on items, implementation of gaggle, standardization of, for technology for the CMS renovation, that's a big project. Obviously, it's a big project, but it's a big project making technology right with the design of the remodeled, renovated, modernized facility that we're excited about. And completing conversion of Sentinel One, that is, uh, network security. Transportation, stop alarm violations, keep happening, keep happening, keep happening. Random, but I'll share this. I was in Chesapeake this weekend, and I was in the neighborhood of seeing buses and seeing buses parked because it's going through town and actually seeing them in action, I guess you would say. They have stop alarm cameras. Culpeper County had stop alarm cameras before Chesapeake City did. But a lot of folks are following suit, because across the Commonwealth, we have that problem. And it's also affects, you know, ability to get drivers. You know, we want to have that as an extra safety feature. We use that as a settling point when we're trying to recruit drivers. We have cameras inside, outside, and when we deploy the stop alarm. So, that is definitely a recruitment tool when we talk about adding drivers. That's just more violations and where they're occurring, and how often, and what time of day. And this is publicly facing, so if folks can take a look at this, this is happening. Routing, membership, routed was slightly up last month. That's probably folks coming off of fall sports and not, and not going home and needing bus transportation more. Afternoon rider ship you see is up, and the total number of routed riders. Stop Finder, I forget, oh, there, there it is. No, that's 12,000 last month, asterisk, never mind on that. I do think that the Stop Finder subscribers has increased again. So, that's, might be our high watermark. I believe it is. Dr. O'Brien would tell you that if, for sure. I don't know that. Happy to answer any questions. Staff, answer any questions you may have about the operations report that makes school happen.
Any comments?
Slide number nine is very informative, and I greatly appreciate that slide. It is on the community eligibility provision for the meals, and having that visual is very helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would like to say that that slide also should bring forward, people who are in TV land or whatever, please do the surveys on the budget, because part of it is, okay, which is, what's more important to the community or our community members? Is it the free breakfast and lunch? Is it having sports? Is it having higher curriculum offerings for our students who do so well? Is it having more time after school for the students that don't do so well? All those things are in that survey, and we really get a smidgen of any idea from any survey. But we're asking you to tell us, so that we make good decisions with the money. That shows that in time, it's going to be decisions like, are we getting another bus or are we going to pay for lunch? And that's really not a really good option. So, please fill out the survey you can find on our website. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bradz. We are now up to board members' comments. We will begin with Ms. Burnett and work her way down.
Thank you, Chairperson Brown. I made a couple notes, let me see if I can find them. Since we last met, your school board has been very busy attending the VSBA Annual Conference, where we attended many inspiring and insightful breakout sessions. We attended the Legislative Breakfast hosted by the Chamber of Commerce at our CTEC, where students prepared a bountiful breakfast, complimented, so many people complimented in attendance how wonderful Chef Jay and the students did on the breakfast. We attended Newsies, well, I attended Newsies at CMS, and also attended the CMS Winter Choral Concert. When I look at those programs and I see how many people it takes and how many volunteers it takes to put these productions on, one of the things that I realized moving here 21 years ago is that we are a community of volunteers and helpers, and it takes everyone, and I want to give a big shout out to the parents and the community volunteers for all they do to support our school system and the events our schools put on. I also attended the signing of Brett Clatterball. He did an early signing, and thank you to everyone for allowing me to be a part of that joyous occasion. And then I attended the EVCHS James Wood Wrestling Tournament. That was very well done, and it was great to see our new ladies wrestling coach, Lexi Snow, at the helm. And then we also attended a fall retreat, and I want to thank our directors and staff for all the updates on our academic progress and what we have in store for the future. Some of our board members also participated in the Culpeper Christmas Parade, and I just want to thank everyone who helps put school together and make these events happen. You enrich our lives by giving back your talents and time. Thank you, volunteers, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Ms. Pearson?
Thank you. Some of the same things from Ms. Burnett. Again, I wanted to thank our staff for their valuable information and presentations at our annual school board retreat on November 15th. And I want to give a little congratulations to the CCHS SCA sponsor, Ms. Mary Jo Hyde and Dr. Soderholm. On, let's see, November 16th, they hosted 14 high schools from throughout Virginia for the Region Four SCA Leadership Conference. It was very well-run, very well-organized, and they received many positive comments, so I wanted to give them a shout out. And also a shout out to our Yow Elementary School, 10 students who conducted the specially brewed Coffee Cart. This time, it was a drive-through endeavor with donuts. Of course, I never miss a donut, and so I was there and participated. And the teachers of Ms. Silver and Ms. Duggar and Mrs. Gibson and Mrs. Kreske and Ms. Scott really did a great job, and the students were, were just amazing as they served everyone and did a good job. So, yay, specially brewed coffee. In addition, I want to thank everyone for, as, as we got together and tried to arrange our calendars with the Board of Supervisors and our local legislators, and, and we've had several meetings also with the Chamber of Commerce. That, that was really quite valuable use of time, and I felt like there was a lot of good dialogue, and everyone represented their needs very well, and, and I was pleased to be a participant, or really just an observer of that. So, thank you. We've got a lot of annual performances going on, as Ms. Burnett mentioned, and the support for arts is obviously very strong here in Culpeper. And again, we had a great Christmas parade yesterday. It was really fun to see the number of students on the sidewalk waving and so happy about the bus. So, good job, transportation, for getting that, that going, and I'd just like to wish everyone Happy Holidays and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Ms. Baker?
Good evening. First, about the convention, the VSBA convention in November, part of it is the delegate assembly, and that is where the seven proposals that we talked about a couple of months ago came up for voting. And of the seven, they were presented, they were submitted by partially each of them, Fairfax, I think Prince William and Arlington. The seven proposals were all accepted by the delegate assembly, so they will become the official VSBA legislative positions, that they will lobby this current general, the upcoming General Assembly. There was also a bylaw request to change a few of the bylaws for the VSBA, but the ones that they really wanted were not voted in, they were, they were rejected. So, the bylaws for the VSBA remains exactly as it is now. And that was just about all that went on, I guess, at the delegate convention. The only other thing is that I thought the choir tonight was really wonderful, and I guess, "Merry Christmas."
All right.
Ms. Hudson? Thank you. Loved the Newsies at CMS. They always do a fantastic job of their theater productions, enjoyed that very much. Also attended the VSBA convention, had some very inspirational speakers there that we learned from. The band concert at EV and Floyd, with Floyd T. Benz at EV was great. The students are fabulous. The, the work is really showing in, in the practice that they have put in. And Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and Happy New Year.
Sorry that, I don't see Dr. Soderholm, but I wanted to congratulate him and CCHS for the VDOE award they received. Also, wanted to just thank Mr. Glick for the fantastic presentation, because family involvement is so important, and the creativity there is commendable. And I also wanted to say, you know, we really appreciated Campbell Lee and what she had to share, and the good job that she did, but also, Dr. Bradz, for engaging our students. Thank you. I, I really think that's very valuable. And the yonder pouches, thank you, principals and staff, for taking on that daunting task and doing it so well. Thank you.
Good evening. I wanted to just mention, a lot of the members talked about going to the VSBA convention, which was a great time to get a lot of great training. And I was able to actually do some alternative training, and professional development's important, and, you know, we like to offer that for teachers. And so, I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to go to the alternative type training, which was with the School Board Member Alliance. And they had several surprise guests, so we actually got to hear from Governor Youngkin, Winson Sears, the Secretary of Education for Virginia, the President of the Virginia DOE, and just, they gave a lot of the presentations. So, the training was outstanding, and I look forward to sharing with any of the board members that are interested, and just appreciate the opportunity to go and be a part of that. There's just a, a level of optimism right now with the holidays coming, so it was, it was great to go and recharge. Thank you.
All right. All I have to say, after everyone has gone over everything possible that could have been seen, looked at, enjoyed, all of that was fabulous, and I would just say, it's not but a little bit more time before the break comes. May you have a great break with your family and friends, and please make sure you come back to us if you're employed by us. And fill out the budget survey. And with that, we will call it a day and have us read into closed session.
I move that the school board convene a closed session at 7:06 PM to consider the following personnel matters pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1. The appointment of certified class personnel, the appointment of classified personnel, the transfer of classified personnel, the separation of certified personnel, the separation of classified personnel, the approval of substitutes for the 2024-2025 school year, approval of 2024-2025 amended winter coaching supplements for CCHS, the approval of the 2024-2025 amended winter coaching supplements for EVHS, approval of the 2024-2025 amended winter coaching supplements for CMS and Floyd T. Benz Middle School, and the self-evaluation of school board members.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
The last thing I would like to say is also in our agenda and online for you to see is committee reports that we put out. The Maintenance Department has Appreciation Week, December 2nd to 6th, which was last week. Principal Assistant Principal Appreciation Week is January 13th through 17th. Future meetings, the capital planning for Culpeper County School Board, December 11th, the administrative meeting for Culpeper County School Boards, December 17th. Both those are at the school board office, and we will be back again in January with the finance meeting in January 13th and the regular board meeting on January 13th also, right here where we're at. With that, thank you, and we will have a five-minute break before we go into closed session. Thank you.